We'll get started in about one more minute. Just as a reminder for everybody on your computers or on your phone, to please keep phones muted so we don't get any echoing. And when you want to talk, unmute yourself. And we'll have Todd do the same to make sure that we can hear you. Okay, we're at seven o'clock. So before I get started with this meeting, this is our second go at the Zoom meeting. So hopefully this one will go a little bit more seamless. So I want to welcome everybody to our April 21st, 2020 City Council meeting. This meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we have a productive meeting. Consistent with Bill Murray Henley's order, 2028 dated March 24th, 2020, requiring all public meetings be held remotely. We are following the directions of that order. On this agenda are routine and necessary actions for our council to consider. We also will provide two opportunities for the public to provide their comments. Joining me in the council chambers are myself, Mayor Burkner, City Administrator Katie Allen, City Clerk Anne Swenson, Police Chief Brian Asmus, Operations and Maintenance Director Jennifer Camp, Finance Director RJ Stevenson, IT Support Todd Henderson. Todd will be the manager for the Zoom meeting. Jen Camp will be managing the Facebook Live recording. I would like to take a roll call in a few minutes after I get through the rest of this. Also attending remotely is our CDA Attorney Sean Vowles. As I mentioned earlier, there will be two opportunities for public comment. When that time comes, I will acknowledge public participation for three minutes. For the record, please let me know your name if you're a city of Liberty Lake resident or not. To participate on Zoom, the public can so indicate by choosing the chat feature on Zoom. Finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted until it's time for you to speak. I also want to make sure and remind the City Council members that in order to keep this fluid and timely, when we get to different topics, I will go around council member by council member, asking if you have any comments or have any questions on anything, at which point you will be able to jump in. If at a certain point you have a question on something in the midst of what we're talking about, just raise your hand up so I can see you, and I will acknowledge you by name. So with that, we will start out with the invocation. God our Father, I thank you for all the blessings you provide us each and every day. I ask that you watch over our city, our citizens, our staff, that we do everything possible to maintain the safety of our community. I ask that you give leadership and guidance to our state representatives as well as national representatives. And I ask that you help guide the City Council to make the best decisions possible, especially during this time. I pray for all those that are on the front line across the board. You all know who you are. You're eternally grateful, and I ask that you watch over them as well. In due time. Amen. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and liberty that is its bottom. Okay, I will call this meeting to order after we get the roll call going here. First off, Mayor Pro Tim Mike Kennedy. Can you unmute your phone and acknowledge just that you're here? I think he's muted, Todd. I saw that he unmuted himself. Mike Kennedy, can you double check your phone to make sure you're unmuted? Go ahead. I still can't hear him. Yeah, he's unmuted. Still can't hear. Absolutely muted again. Try it again, Mike. It's going back and forth because we're muted, not hearing. All right, Todd, we're gonna work on that. Any ideas? Oh, I hear somebody. Mike, you there? Nope, still can't hear. And I thought we were gonna work out the logistics on this technology. This is the record. And I know it did work. We did hear you earlier, Mike, so we're figuring it out.
Jen, keep this in mind while we're calling on Michael.
Yeah. Chris Kamiskas. I can't hear Chris either.
Here.
Oh, there we go. I got her. Perfect. Maybe that was what the issue with Mike. Councilmember Hugh Severs. He is still on. Yeah, Severs is here. I got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to tell her you don't know?
Yeah, all right. Just, okay. Phil Foyer. Here, perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Dan Dunn.
Here, good afternoon.
All right, thank you. And we'll see if Councilmember Langford's on the phone by chance. No, I'm here. All right, thank you, Councilmember Langford. So it looks like we got everybody that we need in attendance. So a roll call has been accomplished. We'll move on to the Agenda Approval. Mayor Pro Tim Kennedy.
What happened to Amy Kurtz?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Councilmember Kurtz. Thank you. It's been a long day.
Good to have you, Jer.
Okay. Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. He needs to be unmuted still, I think. When I think for the council's perspective, can we just unmute them all? Just the council? If that's possible, you don't have to go back and forth like this. They can see us standing forever.
I'm ready. I'm ready.
All right. All right, so I can hear. I think everybody can hear me, and I can hear everybody at this point. So we are going to move on to the Agenda Approval. Councilmember Kennedy. Yeah, I still can't hear him. Councilmember Severs, do you want to jump in on this?
I'm going to do a little as a debate.
Okay, great. We got a second. All in favor? Signify by raising your right hand.
Aye.
Or say an aye. I got you. Okay, we got the Agenda Approved. Okay, so our next item is citizen comments for the first time. So I will look at Todd to give me the green light that we can get citizen comments. So I will, we do have one to read in for the record by Anne. So Anne, do you want to read the one in for the record?
Neighbor staff and elected officials, Tom Salver, Liberty Lake River District. First and always, I heartfelt thanks to our Liberty Lake staff to keep our city going no matter the weather, water, heat, earthquakes, and now the global pandemic. Next, I've spoken with others in the River District who have a 99016 zip code. We all filled out the census and tried to correct our location from Green Acres to Liberty Lake with no success. My concern is not only that it inaccurately represents Green Acres, but more importantly, it under-represents Liberty Lake with health challenges. From the Census Date website, it says, Census Bureau Economic Programs Including the Economic Census Provide detailed statistics that are important for industries and communities. Trade Associations, Chamber of Commerce, and Businesses provide honest information for economic development, business decisions, and strategic planning. Can we please get this straightened out? The 99016 is also assigned to the Green Acres Post Office, which is fine, but we are Liberty Lake, not Green Acres, with appreciation on Solber.
So for those councilmembers that didn't get a chance to hear that or couldn't hear it very well, we'll make sure that that gets emailed out to all of you so you have a chance to read the citizen comments from Tom Solber regarding zip code requests. Are there any other citizen comments? None being heard. We will move on to our presentations. We'll start with COVID-19.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to just provide you a little bit of update on COVID-19 from a public safety perspective. We continue to meet every day at eight o'clock in the morning as a policy group. So it is myself, Katie Allen, and Mayor Burkner attending those meetings and providing input to that group on the regional issues involving response to COVID-19. Recently, what has happened is that the past several weeks, the Emergency Coordination Center has been represented by the incident management team. Those have now stood down, and the Emergency Coordination Center is now being handled to our local people here in the county region. As we look at this as being a longer term issue potentially, we continue to plan for food security for our region. There's concerns about behavioral health services that may be required, and we're planning for that. The financial piece, the financial group is building an executive summaries that will be presented to the policy group. And on the health side of this, this is looking at expanding the screening locations to various locations throughout the county instead of just the playgrounds to provide more testing for the region. Locally here in Liberty Lake, as I mentioned last time, we are responsible for following up on investigating complaints about violations of the government order. And as of today, we have received responding to resolve 48 of those complaints here in Liberty Lake. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Could everybody on the computer give me a thumbs up? If you could hear Chief, okay, just so I know how we're doing so far. Good to go, okay? I do, I do want to say in relation to the COVID-19, Task Force, if you will, where we meet daily, I really want to compliment everybody involved. We have city representatives across our region. We have every mayor involved as much as they can for every meeting they can get to. We also have our county commissioners, which I want to thank because they've been involved. And we've had Kathy McMorris around at the county meetings as well. And we have other representatives or their assistants joining. So it really has been a remarkable county response as a whole. And I have to say, I couldn't be more impressed with House, Book, and County Council. Any questions regarding COVID-19 or Chief or myself? We'll be discussing other things further on that topic, but we want to give you a little briefing on our meetings and how they're going. No questions coming up? I don't see any hands up. We will move on to Police Department Facility Update.
Yeah, we're going to call this script up here. There's a number of other subjects that I just hope they don't have to ask.
My apologies. We're gonna, we've got some more COVID items to cover. We're gonna be discussing the CARES Act. Katie Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. As Chief Asmus was saying and Mayor Burkner, this is a very, it's a daily meeting, and it's very chaotic. Numbers are always changing, and you have to be there to really understand the impact on our entire community. Regarding the CARES Act, what I wanted to share with all of you is that the state of Washington received over $2 billion of federal funding. This funding was passed, signed into law by the president on March 27. Of those over $2 billion, $90 million of those dollars were allocated to Spokane County. And so a major effort is underway right now to decide how those funds are going to be spent. We had a precursor meeting last Wednesday, and that's going to continue to tomorrow. And there's a number of buckets. And so I just wanted to share with all of you the buckets so you're aware of the distribution of these funds and a lot of the work that has to go into ultimately deciding how the money is going to be appropriated. So one will be, one bucket is called Nonprofits. Another bucket is called Housing Landlords and Tenants. Another bucket is Continuity of Government. Another bucket is Employer and Employee Recovery. Another bucket is VOC Operations. So that covers the Emergency Operations Center and all the staff that have been spending time there. Another is Public Health Response, and finally Food Need Response. So this isn't all of the money that is going to be received, but the CARES Act is the first effort that we will be spending as a region to work collaboratively in the distribution of those funds. So the county is seeking and requesting, put out a press release tonight about 5:00, and they are looking for input. The other thing I wanted to share with the council is these funds go from the governor's office to the county commissioners, and then the county commissioners ultimately decide on the distribution. And so it's important that we stay involved through that process. I want to move on to communication with employees.
Anne, I'm sorry. Councilmember Severs?
Here. Katie, thank you for sharing some of the reasons that we allocated some of the funds there. What I'm hearing is we get $90 million out of $2 billion allocated in state. Even given the west side of state being a much higher population than Spokane County, that's four and a half percent of the amount correctly. Do you have any comments on why is it such a low proportion as percentage coming into Spokane County with unique businesses on the west side? Or just give us a follow up on that?
I do. So let me first identify the other agencies that are going to be getting some of those dollars. One is King County, Pierce County, Snohomish County, Spokane County, and Seattle. In order to be eligible for these funds, it was decided that you had to have a jurisdictional population of 500,000 or more people. There are other funds that are becoming into smaller jurisdictions in other counties and cities that don't meet that criteria. How did they arrive at the eritment here? I'll be honest with you, Councilmember Severs, I don't know, but I will ask tomorrow. I don't know if it was based on per capita or if it was based on the economic impact in certain areas or if it's based on requests for money. To give you an order of magnitude, we're working on the alternative care facility at the playgrounds. We mentioned this last week. Just that facility is over $9 million. And so there's a huge need for funds here, but I'm not sure how they arrived in.
I don't know whether it's either additional info with the decision whether the federal or the larger state budgets, the county's doing to figure out how we get more of those funds, especially to our people.
I think that we've been very vocal about making sure that our needs are met within our region, and we'll continue to be very vocal about it. I know that everybody within our state and on this side of state are working hard to make sure that we're getting all the resources available to us.
So great question, and we will follow up. And if I get more information, I'll just email it to all of you. Moving on, another important aspect of our current situation is the communication with our employees. As you can imagine, they have a lot of questions and they have a lot of concerns about the work that they do, the safety of the work that they do, our ability to continue to provide the level of services that we have. And so we have met, Mayor Burkner and I have met every week in the past four weeks with all of our employees by department and try to be very forthcoming and proactive in communication. This is challenging because we don't always have all the answers, and it's also challenging because everything keeps moving. But I really wanted to share with you that we're kind of doing it on a very personal interaction with our employees. We also have to provide, what we want to provide them with resources that are available should they need them related to federal and state programs that they may be entitled to receive. So RJ is our expert in that area as well as the Senate Ball Group. It's very complicated. I'll say there's a lot of terminology between layoffs and pillows, and I won't go through all that. But it's good to have MRC, Senate Ball, and RJ kind of being in charge of making sure that our employees receive the benefits that they're entitled to. So on that note, I want to turn over to RJ, and he's going to cover some of the forecasting, the financial forecasting that we put together.
And before RJ jumps into that, I do want to let you guys know from the COVID group, we also have representatives from GSI, Greater Spokane Valley Chamber, as well as the other chambers. And they're also in discussion and creating plans on how to assist local businesses within our community and within our region to help get them back on their feet. RJ?
Good evening, council. So earlier today, you should have saw an updated financial monitor. We introduced this at the last council meeting. The city is clearly reacting in tier three. We did have a hiring freeze. This actually happened at the beginning of April. I'm gonna go over the numbers of what that impact of the hiring freeze is from a dollar standpoint here in a couple of minutes. We're still have discretionary spending. We're not, there's no travel training. So when we go on the numbers, we'll see that there's been some cuts to legislative. That's because there's been AWC conference. And so that was one of the budget reduction items we chose for that, as well as all staff have no travel training at this point this year. And then we also asked our directors to look at their budgets and where we can make some more reductions to react to, at least we're looking at three months out to where we get the revenue increase. With that, I'm going to go to the second page, which has a bunch of numbers on there. So what we, what we're basing this assumption on is just looking at the next three months. And we can only look at the governor's ban on construction, RV sales, looking at May 4th. We've heard today that that may be a no. So these are constantly going to be refined numbers. But with that assumption, looking at the economy starts to return by July 1st, we also made an assumption with auto sales at about 50% reduction, hoping to win the RDB leadership, so we brought them all the way down, but they were going to get 90% of the sales over the next three months. With that, a couple of things I want to point out. Distress is that our current cash balances are healthy in the general fund and the reserve fund, 3.9 million and 1.3 in that reserve fund. When we did the revenue analysis, we probably taxed, we know there's the potential of delay payments. On May 10th, I will know what the potential impact on that delay may be if people are going to take the opportunity, not until June. But for just for budgeting purposes or for forecast purposes, we're making an assumption of 8% that we wouldn't collect property tax. That would be, but at some point, we would collect that. But we're just for casual purposes, we want to project that number. For three months, sales tax has seemed not being reduced by about $400,000. We also included building permits of about $130,000 and then other revenue reductions in there as well. We do have, since we did make a lift reimbursement for Orchard Park, which the general fund helped fund some of that, there is that discrepancy of about $250,000 extra in the revenue. So we took that out of the equation, where our true revenue reduction is about a little over $700,000. Yes, the directors, we look at our budgets, where we can make reductions quickly, where we will stop spending, and we'll see those and the differences there. Parks with the hiring freeze, that impact would end at $170,000 per year without bringing our typical seasonal staff along. And we have notes at the bottom where some of the other assumptions are being made. There's a little red box off the right. But this is showing what we feel with these reductions over the next three months that we'll meet our target on revenue reduction after about $33,000 to spare. Mayor, any questions?
Any questions for RJ from the council?
You. I see you. Yeah, that is, okay, go ahead. More of a comment than a question, but this is the council. I'm scared if we want to make a suggestion to the mayor and the district whether we want to re some of the season hires and I don't think about some of the damage that I missed that. I think there's a valuable business that's right in chief facility, town administration. So we have some ways of the business. I mean, I'm frankly, you know, there's a network, but I'm here to be there. Take the recommendation that we trust the hires, first of all, keep the hires given the economic effect that's caused to the state we make through those families. Just so I'm there to take a discussion, I think we're to say, if you think that having those season hires, back to model, is actually intended to the city by the central quarters, okay, possibly, but if you really don't think that you just had those forward, you should consider saying that that keeps our season hires, even regular season hires. I also keep our state, taking the way that we love to function right now. I should have to take that into consideration for whatever it is that you're having.
And just as a point of clarification, we put a freeze on any new hires at this point, but any seasonals, they're staying on as of right now. We don't have any plans on hiring any regulars. That includes regulars.
That includes regulars, that means the things that we would hire that the government do.
We have all the seasonals. We have all the seasonals currently in place.
Something else, can I add? So Jen has worked really hard. She's a matrix that she follows very closely. And as Mayor Burkner said, we just froze hiring new ones. And I'll just be very honest, we know that without all the events and programs, we didn't need perhaps as many seasonal. However, there are things that we won't be able to do that we've done and some of the extra things around town. Jen is here in the audience. Maybe, Jen, do you want to speak to, do you think, do you think we should chair the council middle things that we would be able to, do you need to do?
Yeah, I think that, and I'll do the same intent if you feel like I need to. We need some more information on it. The gist of it is, I really want to compliment all the directors across the board. They had a tough task ahead of them on how to cut some things out of the budget. They were all very creative in how to do so and how to have the least amount of impact possible to the community. With that being said, as an example, Jen looked around for cheaper fertilizers that she may have used in the past. We won't be planting as many flowers and stuff throughout the city that you may normally see. You'll see the lawn mode. You'll see everything kept up. But you may not see as much edging going on on the grass areas, things like that. So I'll call it Jen, have anything for that?
So to the comment on the seasonals, we had already started hiring some of our seasonals as early as mid to late February before all of this came into play. So we did have several seasonals staffed at the time that COVID hit. Probably about quarter to maybe half of our full seasonal staff. Once COVID hit, we froze any more hiring of future seasonals. So right now, we're staffed with several seasonals, about 18, I believe. We just decided not to hire anymore and bring anymore on, not only with the thoughts that several of our events have been canceled. That's a huge, that's a huge usage of our seasonal time. But we've also gone through our services and sharpened our pencils and our ideas on how we can focus on the high visibility, high priority, bowling, irrigation, fertilizing, and how we can lessen some of the other things that maybe aren't as visible or aren't as necessary to help kind of compensate. or aren't as necessary to help kind of compensate for any future seasonals not being here. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Langford, I believe you had a question next.
Thank you, there. The question to you, Director, to RJ, I'm looking at your property tax, and with the budget adjustment, the difference, is the difference based on property tax that could have been collected, a new build between this period that is not going to be collected? Or how are you coming for a lower property tax?
So the items that are new builds, that one affect our cash flows until next year. So that would be a factor in for 2021, so the number would be involved with the fact that collecting bottom taxes, based on new construction from last year.
So how did you, so the difference is then, with that delay in existing property tax?
What cost, the $116,000?
So that's just an 8% reduction. What I based on talking to some other cities and counties, that they were thinking that there would be at least a delay in payment, about anywhere from 8% to 10%, so I chose 8%, 8% which I might adjust when I see the May 10th data come in from the county.
So it's not a long-term loss, it's a cash?
So we're, unless there's something changed on the state level, the property tax that we would still get, but the treasurer of the county has done is delayed payments for up to two months. So there's kind of a feeling that there might, what we saw in the last recession is that there was a defer, people were late to pay their taxes, and that very over into this following year, but they still collected.
Did that answer your question, Councilmember Langford?
If those are, thank you very much, Phil.
Any further questions from the council?
Yes, RJ, I don't need there. So in order to look at the expenses, I understand that the $320,000 change is related to the part one. We take that out of the equation, the remaining balance, library, and legislative is just a hair over 5% of the total budget. What, what kind of consequences for repercussions, being, please, on each one of them there, would we, please?
So everything that we looked at in reference to the adjustments of expenditures was all driven director's guidance, based on their individual departments, and it was all things that we can do in such a way that we wouldn't see a major impact to our community overall, and meeting the expectations of that infrastructure that we have in place.
So I can add? I guess the big number that jumped out is the $131,000 for the police, and probably 55,000 for finance.
So part of that number was not hiring the main police officer at this time, which was roughly $70,000. And then Chief, if you want to talk to some of the other items?
Yes, so the rest of that difference, so $70,000 was from postponing the hiring of a new officer, and the rest really came from our travel budget, training, we reduced our overtime amounts, we reduced our fuel amount, we have fuel with a record load right now, so we are saving substantial amount of fuel, and then some of it is office malfeasance. So operationally, it really does not really affect our ability to provide services.
And Bill, just to expand upon that, when we talk about training for our officers, any of the training that was deemed necessary, like there's certain aspects of training they have to have every year, which I'll prove that they've had it, those types of trainings are continuing on. As an example, they just had to get re-certified in CPR slash first aid, so they, keeping the social distancing in mind, they were able to hold that training in such a way that it kept the governor's request in place, but still got those officers that certification they needed.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council? Not hearing any. RJ, you have one more page to go over.
All right, so the final page I want to draw attention to, is I want to do a summary for you to review what capital projects were approved in the 2020 budget and where their funding sources are both in front. So some of the projects that were, were either recommending moving on or maybe looking to the future are funds that revenue sources may be, we either have sufficient cash balance, like the REITs, for instance, that the recognition maybe we want to move forward with the project, especially if we can get a, if we're in a positive bidding environment, which we weren't necessarily in for last year, but we're struggling with the facility park irrigation. We're hoping to go off the bid again this year, because we're expecting the bidding, or, getting to be better. So as you look at the very top, those first five projects up there, they're in the general fund, those are the ones we have concern, the REITs, Harvard Road Innovation, the Streets Capital Funds, those are projects that we thought, if that were recommended, what we would at least look at, because they're in the design base, keep moving forward, because they're in funds that cash has been collected, or there's tie to the grant. So there's a couple with a red mark that say TIB grant. Those are both funds that are, where TIB is currently at least 70%, of the cost, and there's a time sensitivity to those two programs. Is there any questions on this page? Is this more of a FLY, I just sort of have a tool to know where some of these projects and other ones are going to come from?
RJ?
Yes.
Would you please email us a screenshot of this, or let emails this page, and we'll get over?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll get you the electronic copy, and I was going to say to the council, and to RJ, I really like the layout of this. I think this is something we might want to have going forward, because it breaks it up real nicely, and it makes it very readable. Okay, any further questions? Not hearing any. We will move on. Let's go to the police department facility update. Yeah, I'm going to touch that at the end.
So on that note, Chief Asmus and I spent a little bit of time going through the report that was on our agenda last time, and we decided we wanted to call on Vista and get a second opinion on many of the questions that were, that came up there in the meeting. So basically, I have a presentation, I'll go over it very quickly. Most of it is just going to be answering some questions that we received when we were talking to all of you individuals. So we'll dive in when they're just get started. This project, as you would call it, includes a generator, rooftop unit, and lighting. Next, can you, Jen, oh, you know what?
She might have to.
Okay, so the facility was built in 1992. We purchased it in July of 2008 for a low over 1.9 million. TI's are tenant improvements, city quartered infrastructure, $675,000. The police department and library moved in in May of 2009, so it's been a little over, almost 11 years. And then the solar panels were installed by Grant during, during the 2010, $123,760. We'll go to the next slide, has been helping there. So what's involved with the facility, and I know Brian knows all of this firsthand, but basically, in 2012, our server crashed here at C-Ell, so we moved our server to the police department. We did have a power failure at the police department, and the batteries in the solar I learned in our research, were never really designed to support the whole facility, and we did lose, you know, the power failure, and we weren't able to keep the facility operational. We do have an inverter situation, it appears to not be working. I do want to underscore that the work that we did on this project, we did not evaluate the current solar system, nor the batteries, that would actually be a different project, but we were told that the inverter does not work, the batteries have performance issues and should be evaluated. The rooftop units that are composed to be replaced for this project are near the end of their life, they are the original devices, and in talking to Vista, generally, they, right now, they're 28 years old, generally, they program usually about 22 years is the life of a rooftop unit. And then finally, the lighting project primarily just converts LED to high pressure, so that's kind of just some quick facts about the project. Go to the next slide. We did receive questions about how does a roof of $150,000 work out? The generator's $161,000, the rooftop unit's $81,000, and the lighting is $67,000, so that's only due to $250,000. So now I'm going to go through, I think, the questions that we came up. How is the project funded? And included in RJ's spreadsheet that we just went over, this project is funded with $3, it can only be used for capital improvements, cannot be used for operational costs. How was the scope of this project identified? It was identified by Eneresco, who evaluated all of our facilities and identified uses the priority areas. Can we break this project into three separate projects? In other words, move forward with the generator or the RTU, without the lights, or any combination thereof? The answer is yes, but the proposal would have to be redone. Individual projects possibly change, if we change the scope that's included in this project. Next slide, is this project time sensitive, that we have to do it now? The answer is no, but I'm going to ask the chief to speak. He had a conversation with other police departments across the state, as well as fire departments, and Chief, can you level a bit of insight on that?
Yes, thank you. So one of the things that I was asked to do is to see what other agencies, police departments, fire departments in our region were doing for backup generation for their facilities. So I contacted GMA, York Heights Police Department, Eastern Washington University Police Department, Spokane Valley Fire Department, and then my old stomping grounds, Young Police Department, to find out if they had generators, what sizes they were, and the operational capacity of those. And so all of those agencies have some type of backup generators to their police departments or to the fire department. Basically, they're establishing that they're essential facilities in their communities, that backup power to those facilities is critical. And when I asked about, because another question was asked kind of tight to this, about the size of the generator, I can tell you that unless, I think it was, York Heights Police Department had a, I think it was a 25 kilowatts Honda on wheels, gas powered generator, all the others had a 45 kilowatt, up to 100 kilowatt generator size to run their facilities. So I took, looked at a couple of these from square footage wise, so Young Police Department, 10,000 square foot facility, very comparable to our size, and they have a 100 kilowatt generator installed at that facility to power that building. Spokane Valley Fire Department has a Fire Station 3 here in Weyl, they have a 50 kilowatt generator that powers that building, their administration building, they only power about 80% of that building, and they use a 50 kilowatt generator for that. And then the other agencies also have between a 45 to 100 kilowatt generator for their public safety facilities.
So the question about the generator size, it is sized to support the whole facility, however, the circuits are only connected to the central areas, we're not, at this time, invested in the connection of the circuits to support the building. Is that correct, Jen? So now I'm going to go to the RTU, why? The question was, why is it not 90% efficiency? And in talking to Vista, what they indicated to Chief and I is that any, it wouldn't, money wouldn't, see, the return on investment would not pencil out. So in other words, the efficiency that you gain with a 90% efficient unit would not cover the cost of the unit. So that was the responsibility that back to Vista. So they thought that going with an 80% efficiency rating, we're talking, it would be kind of the norm for what we're doing. And then finally, the question came up, can we manually operate the garage doors and the gates, and the answer is yes. So that was the question that you asked. I think I, hopefully, I answered all the questions that came up in our phone call. So then I'm going to go to the next slide, which is next step. And in all honesty, what the chief and I, and I think we're looking for is, do you want us to bring back this project on May 5th or not? And unless, do you have any other questions that you'd like us to answer?
So start with any questions from the council? Not hearing any? Is there a request? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Quayre.
Katie, what was your question again? What did you have?
So, you know, we've been, this is a project that was identified, spoke through the press at least six months ago. We put it into our capital facilities plan, and we added it to our budget, and I think what we are right now, Councilmember Quayre, is we're really looking for the feedback from the council. You know, Brian and I talked about this, we don't, we're not trying to force this project. I know timing is a concern and a question, but we just want to know if the council wants to proceed with doing this project or not, because picking it up and putting it down is getting kind of, taking a lot of our resources. So really, Councilmember, what we're looking for is direction from the council to move forward or not.
So I guess the sort of it is, we're looking for a motion to have it added to the May 5th agenda?
Mayor?
Councilmember Langford?
Yes, sir. Last meeting, I requested that you get the information and not be asked to make a determination at this meeting. That was affirmed through Katie and other sources, as well as the council. So we come, fast forward today, we're getting the same piece of candy wrapped in a different wrapper, okay? Not trying to force you to make a decision, but we want to know what your direction is. That is polled by any other names. So whether or not you ask us to vote for it or against it, you've already asked us tonight to poll, okay? And I think it's incorrect for us to even think about polling ever posed, that just, here's the information, we'll be back with you next month.
Well, with all due respect, Councilmember Langford, I think the ask is if you guys want it to be brought to the May 5th council meeting to vote on it or not, which gives you guys another two and a half weeks to decide on it, and we can have further discussions at night, and if there's further questions, you guys are all more than welcome to ask up tonight.
You guys have thought that we would not have this discussion tonight, and here we are in this discussion.
Well, just to clarify, just to clarify, there were questions that were asked by councilmembers at the last meeting, and we, as the staff, did their research to provide that information as an update, which is what we provided to you guys. So it's up to you guys, if you want to make a motion and bring it on the May 5th council meeting, that's your choice. If not, you don't have to. Councilmember Kennedy? I cannot hear you, sir. I can hear everybody else. You're going on mute? No? Saying no, I got that, I can read lips a little bit. I'm muted. Todd, can you work on that? Can you type into the chat, Councilmember Kennedy? If you look down on your screen, there should be a spot where you can, I think he's working on right now. Yeah, he's, I think he's typing in his question right now. And just while, while he's doing that, I will let everybody, all the councilmembers know, and we'll have any other audience members that are in participation. You may see that Councilmember Severs is not on the screen, but he is still on the call. But I just want to make sure that, oh, you are on there. I couldn't see it. You were off for a second. I didn't see about that. Michael, he's back on. I just don't see him. So there he is. Now I got you. Councilmember Kennedy, ready to go get that message? And, Councilmember Severs, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. But what, what's wrong with women? Councilmember, that's the question. Correct about the top tier, whether it's, I feel that they have some of these, something that may come back to mind, so we should think about that. But briefly, there are, yeah, for instance. Certainly, Katie, a quick question for you. Do, did I hear you say that, you know, some of the new Tuesday, you basically do not have a backup generator, is there another, do you think, right now? So you, it is, in our system, you're not certainly available?
Correct. So we do not have a backup system if we have a power failure, that's the part, correct?
Okay, thanks for that, Katie. That alone, and I, I didn't know, except when I was running our last meeting, and there was a further conversation after we moved to the other more people, especially three, four, five, realizing that we don't have a backup, you know, the system there. Backup, you know, I hate to, we need to move forward. There's a ton of health factors in our servers that are destroying our buildings. I think the things are pretty big, um, changing. You know, that, uh, that could definitely, I don't know, I'm really, I think that is, because I'm really pretty much, uh, for me, uh, maybe, uh, you.
Second?
Got a second, I believe. First one was from Councilmember Dunn. Open it up for discussion. Councilmember Kamiskas has a question.
Just, you know, me in the business that I'm in, I do everything live. I work on a regular basis, so I talk for backup. And, you know, seeing our server down all the time that we're the last 10 years, and so down council. You know, this can be quite a disaster if that should be, lose, lose that server and not be able to get to be back up and running. So I'm going to be calling for you back for some of this discussion that's possible to do at the next meeting. I think, you know, taking a look at the list that RJ provided, that we just followed a bit ago, where they have a project that's provided by a certain source, including this, this additional information together with that, everybody, because it's working, the funding source, and it is going to be a big help under that discussion.
Have a question, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Langford.
I actually have two questions, and that'll be it. The first one is, how long has the police department that, that building without a backup generator?
11 years.
And it's important to date. Secondly, why would we move the service from City Hall to a police department that doesn't have backup generator service?
Go ahead. So one of the reasons why we moved the server over to the police department from City Hall is that it was in a, an environment that was not controlled, temperature-wise. It was basically in the closet. We also had, when we put the fiber in back in 2015, I believe, one of the main points was that the police department, we thought that was the best location to be in the other facility as well. Plus, it's in the police department, for our new security facilities as well. Foot traffic in City Hall, so we just thought that was a better spot to have it. Nor does City Hall have a backup generator. If I could just add a little bit of clarification. So when the solar project was installed at the police department, the intent was to have that solar project to the battery storage provide up to three days of backup power. So we didn't have a generator, but with that solar project brought capacity to have several circuits run for up to three days. So we had that, and that solar project was installed in 2010. And then it was September 30th of 2018, then we experienced a power failure at the police department. And it was at that time that we learned that that backup system powered by the solar panels failed. And shortly after that is when we started pursuing another option for backup power to the solar.
So from the time that the solar system was implemented until the failure in 2018, how many times had the police department tested solar backup system to see if it was functioning?
I, I don't know if I can answer that. The, the, I had never, and we'd never tested the solar backup power system at all. But the fire city engineer did that as a facilities project. I don't know if he did. I was not aware of it. So, best of my knowledge, it was never tested.
And I could add, if I'd like to add also, in chief's phone call with other police departments and the background of my, my experience in the public sector, I'm not familiar with anybody that uses solar panels and batteries. And it was brought up with Avista, and they did not believe that that system was sufficient to provide backup power for the solar facilities of the solar. We do receive annual savings on our energy bill for Avista because of this solar. So they are used, we do generate savings, and it's just not a source of backup, backup power.
Councilmember Seavers, I saw your hand up.
I can't hear the comments through, um, Councilmember Langford, appreciate your questions there too. That's right. Right with the kind of going on with the past, I wondered if we should stem up with a qualitative procedure going forward to say, we need to be testing things on a regular basis. It sounds to me like we have to test solutions, go forward, a solar panel is not a solution. Generators ain't a solution, and that's come up with. So that motion, um, definitely going, and we get to session the way on the, and is that they do, they still only begin at the early time, uh, as a session on. Whether that was a qualitative procedure to test the purpose of, for the facilities like our food kitchen, on a regular basis, I don't know, regularly, it's moving that way a little bit. They may try to, to provide that at least once a year for testing these things. Actually, they actually work, so the system doesn't fail. They do, do pretty much, maybe not enough time. But, um, although, don't, I don't think it's a good idea, but great work, and I'm on that thing. For, something we're missing, we need a backup, where the service on it. So that food kitchen, which is very bad, we need some location. But kind of all being there, and then, uh, let's take it to the outset, I don't know what I'm bringing.
Councilmember Kamiskas, I saw your hand next.
And just another quick point from a professional standpoint. Katie and I talked about this a little bit, you know, for a while, it's pretty, pretty new, so I haven't seen it up yet. But, you know, to follow up on, if you're guarding the backup power to the server or anything like that, just from a professional standpoint, now there are better, or less expensive options for you going forward, if you're guarding the wasting our services and whatnot, from whatever third party service. Obviously, I can't advocate for our own, but there's some which are provided out there, which would leave us, at that point, making sure the building is not, but, um, I, I do want to say that we really need to start looking at what are long-term obstacles we're going to do, differently, get that server over in the cloud, or restating the data from out.
Okay. Councilmember Kurtz?
I'm wondering, what he said about, you know, with a, a graph of policy on, uh, we, we touch whatever we're doing, we're trying to have, or whatever we go with. But one of the questions, I had it sound like, our city servers are over at the city station as well. Will those use backup on these things within this area or anything?
From a power standpoint, yes.
I believe, Councilmember Foyer, have a question?
Yeah, I do. I go, I go back to something that Katie said earlier. We have that presentation that RJ gave us, 740,000, whatever it is, three month debt shortage. This, this may be part of a bigger discussion about all of our plans for the year as far as how spend money is there or is it? That's all related, that is my point.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, it's something that we need to look at all of our items, to your point. It's a matter of timing and which one we want to have further discussions about and which one we need a little, to interact on it.
So the, the presentation that we're showing tonight, we have next week to look at over and follow up with a discussion today?
Yep.
As to what's essential and what's important and what's not.
Well, I think we're going to get to all the other items within our city.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I'd just like to add, maybe, that I am not against the police department having that as a backup power. All those departments that he contacted have what they think is adequate or close to adequate power. The question is, how many of them bought it during this particular crisis? Will we find ourselves in there in a hurry? That's the real question. So to give the police department what they need is not the question. The question is, it's been 18, 19 years, they've had one failure. Can we, at least agree that we can address this, that we'll move backup underneath our key or back under us, and we can move forward? I don't think anybody's denying the fact that we need it. At least for me, it's strictly a matter of timing. I think the project is pretty darn worthy. Thank you.
Councilmember Seavers?
Councilmember Foyer, I'm not very impressed. One point is that we're focusing on the timing of everything. I can tell that this is a capable, that it's just like, we don't know when it's going to happen. And if we're going to get our sensors, we don't know when the power is going to fail. And either it's the law, the police department, or this last, in my opinion. Always can be, this is a big, a lot of things that are all in the way. Now, given that we got, in the way that we're on, moving forward with the city and, that's what the topic is, could potentially be, if we do die, it is. And that's where you just move, uh, go to the professional, uh, you. So it isn't, it isn't to be that somebody that, on that, but what we need to, we don't know when power is going to fail, or whether that, I'm assuming that it's later, and then I know to you, you guys, I did that. So I like that, because the newer, older, the definitely, and the older, that's the truth.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think you made some great points. The only thing I would throw out for the conservative effort is the fact that this has been a primary knowledge issue with the police department since 2018, when they didn't have backup and power failure. And it hasn't been of big value to them enough to bring it forward to council notice or to say, let's buy a generator until COVID-19 is, uh, hit. So anyway, thank you, guys.
Okay, I'm going to have Todd real quick, try to mute Mike's computer. I'm going to call Mike's cell and put him on speakers so he can communicate with us. It's way too quiet. I'll have him in the top. Just be quiet. Yes, to you, buddy. All right, so bear with me one second. Okay, we have Mike on the phone now. Oh, we still got feedback.
So Mayor, I did talk to Mike, and I refer to take what he said.
Yeah, so Mike, Katie's going to talk about what your comment was.
So Mike's request that he makes a, well, Mike requested to make a motion to defer this for 30 days.
So we already have a motion on the floor to, to, before, before we go out first?
So, so we're going to, we'll move forward with the motion on the floor. And if you don't want it to be on the make it agenda, then you don't have to vote for it. Everyone clear? Okay, so all in favor of having the generator on the May 5th agenda? Or possible vote and discussion, signified by saying aye or raising your hand? I see.
Aye.
Point, question, point of creation of the mayor's, uh, it's not, we're not the topic of the mayor or of the project, right?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor, signify by saying aye or raising your right hand. I have Councilmember Kurtz, Kamiskas, Severs, and Dunn in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, same response?
No.
I have Councilmember Kennedy, Langford, and Foyer at no's. Motion passes. Okay, we will move on to mayor and council reports. Any council reports?
It was Dan, um, we got for the effort of River Lake One in our island, and we are so. We said at this point, it's probably not, because that's interest or timing and all things of the report. After, we're not going to be organizing any effort this year with respect to the River Lake Art Store.
Thank you for that, Dan. And it is something that I want to touch on a little bit in my report with further detail. But I'll wait for other council members, if you have any other reports. Not hearing any. I will do my report. First off, I want to say that we are keeping a pulse, a very tight pulse check on what is going on within our city in regards to our local businesses and how they're impacted, which in turn helps us project what we need to do and how we need to react. We have a number of events, one of which Councilmember Dunn just referenced, that have been canceled. You will see some events throughout our city have been canceled, either due to the timing of the situation from a city decision standpoint. But I also want to make sure, not only the council, but the citizens on, on Facebook are aware that some of these events that are held are not held by the city directly. They're put on by other entities, and it was by their choice to either postpone or cancel those events. We will continue to keep you guys all updated on a regular basis as we continue to assess the situation and where we're at. One of the events for discussion that has come up is like in regards to the farmers market. The group that runs the farmers market have pushed back the start date based on how they look at things. But I know there's a lot of discussion with the cities throughout our region. cities throughout our region on how to go about having farmer's markets. Uh, it's considered a, uh, essential, and so they are, them being the, uh, organization that puts on the farmer's market, is looking how we can put that together, um, while maintaining social distancing, things to that effect. Um, so I know that some of those ideas included not have, uh, food available for face testing, things to that effect, um, discussed having, uh, and we're going to have further discussions with them about how to, uh, fence off the area, um, with similar orange fencing that you might see in some of our parks, so there's only one entrance, so, uh, we allot so many people in at a time. Um, you know, these are all things that we take into great consideration when moving forward, uh, with our events. Um, we've even had, started to have discussions about the Fourth of July and the fireworks. Um, uh, we've talked, uh, with other organizations like the, uh, uh, group that lives around the lake, and their fireworks show is one of the Fourth of July parade. Uh, as I mentioned, we're watching it closely, and we are collectively, uh, working on, um, potential later dates, if needed, if we get to that point. Um, so these are all things that we are watching very closely. Um, I did, as some of you may have heard, um, have a conversation with Governor Ensley on Friday at four P M. Uh, it included myself, uh, the city, uh, Spokane mayor, uh, Spokane Valley mayor, the Cheney mayor, and the mayor from Poland. Um, during this discussion, he gave us, uh, kind of his opening as to what's going on and how they're looking at things. Uh, he didn't dictate, or rather indicate, uh, what their plans are as far as next steps, uh, but they were looking at it closely. Um, he also did not indicate, uh, what his plan is on extending the May fourth date, uh, to move things, uh, along and get it back open. As mayors of the city, we collectively shared a message that we appreciate, uh, his consideration of our individual cities, um, and that we are looking at all measures, uh, necessary to take to make sure, A, that we're keeping our communities safe, but B, also being cognizant of all those impacted, from businesses locally to, uh, families, uh, where the parents are currently receiving unemployment checks. Um, we discussed some items such as construction, uh, car and RV sales, how some of those things could be slowly implemented, um, and I expressed the importance of slowly because it needs to be done slowly. Um, we need to have this be a gradual approach to getting back to that quote unquote normal. Um, and we threw out some ideas of how we might be able to start looking at doing that. We're going to continue to have this discussion of the region, uh, how we think we might be able to get back to, uh, some of that, uh, quote unquote normal. He said he would take our thoughts into consideration, um, and that was the gist of the conversation. Uh, as I mentioned, and I'll reiterate it, um, myself along with the other mayors within Spokane County, um, are sharing a collective message of not only the impact to our citizens, to our local businesses, but, but to our cities as well. Uh, we all shared some of the things that we're starting to see within our own communities, and we will continue to, uh, voice, uh, some of the ideas that we have of slow rolling, uh, the process of getting back to normal, keeping the health and welfare of all of our citizens within our community in mind. So that is, uh, my report on that piece. Uh, as you can imagine, we've had a lot of meetings, both internally and externally, on this topic in particular. As I mentioned, the GSI and, uh, some of the other valley chambers are working on a plan to get information together to get to our local businesses within our region on options available, um, to help support them during this time. So that is my report. Any questions from the council?
Hi, Dan. Dan, I have one other observation.
I heard councilmember Langford first, so I will jump at Dan.
Thank you, and thank you, Senator Dunn. Uh, Mayor, I appreciate you relaying the conversation. It, it's good that you're letting us know what the conversation was about and what it was like. Uh, was there any consensus between the mayors about, uh, what their position would be if it became contrary to what the government said? And I guess another question we need to our city attorney is on, is do we, as a city, and primarily you as the, the lead, the mayor, do we have to go in lockstep with what the mayor said, or do we have any, any authority left to govern our own city? And what's your thoughts and the thoughts of others on the council, Mike? Thank you.
So I will express from the, uh, mayor's perspective within the region, we all shared the same message, and we did share with him that we didn't feel that Spokane County, uh, was similar to other counties on the Seattle side of the state. Um, we expressed where we're at, the things that we've done, uh, in our region to mitigate the risks, uh, within our communities, uh, and we were pretty vocal about the fact that, uh, we feel that we are not in the same position that some of the other counties might be in. Um, we will continue to be vocal about that, but we're also keeping close tabs on what some of the other counties have done and the challenges that they have faced for their actions. I know that, uh, there's a couple of counties within our state that decided to proceed, um, with what they wanted to do as counties, uh, and they were sent letters, uh, from the governor's office, uh, stating that, uh, they, they might want to, uh, slow their roll a little bit, to put it lightly. Um, but yes, we are being very vocal, will continue to be vocal, while being cognizant of all the challenges and risks that come with that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, councilmember Dunn, I believe you are next.
Yeah, this summer, the, uh, and one house act and the extension of the payroll section program, uh, that's the small business base, uh, forgiven loans, um, it was previously funded to be amount three hundred fifty million, uh, will be returned, it's down, we're going to vote tomorrow in the past, um, for the small businesses of our community who are not able to participate in first grant funding. Um, the urgent act is to visit with your commercial banker, um, that additional extension program is an opportunity, uh, a lifeline, it's a gateway to small business.
Any other councilmembers have a question? Not hearing any, we will proceed with the city administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Uh, I want to first say that these remote meetings are a challenge for us, and I just wanted to thank Todd for helping us kind of get everything squared away, and I think because order is still in place in our next council meeting will get even better with muting and et cetera. So on that note, uh, just a quick update on Harvard and Henry. So on Henry Road, there's a change order in your package tonight. Um, this is time sensitive, it is on the critical path for the design effort of Henry Road, and the state is requiring that we do the NEPA process, which is the National Environmental Review, as opposed to a local or state review. There is additional resources, and the cost of that change order is forty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, yeah, there's, I won't go into a lot of details, I know Lisa's on the phone, she can answer specifics if you want, but basically a sound study I know is required involves many other things that is required, uh, requiring, Wash Dot is not going to butt, they're, um, telling us that this must be, um, included, contrary to what our original discussions were. On the funding side, it doesn't affect our six million dollar contribution, doesn't appear to, um, right now for us to contribute more than six million dollars for that project, um, RJ is estimating that we have to be only budgeting about thirty-five percent. So, wanted to let you know about that. Uh, the other thing is Harvard Road, which is the Y D project, um, is on schedule to go to add in June of this year, so that's only two months away. Um, we're hopeful that happens, uh, that's, you know, right now that's the schedule we're carrying, we end up with a deferral or any other schedule we'll let develop, but right now, um, we expect it to go to be at the end of June of twenty twenty. On that note, I'm going to turn it over to Jocelyn, who's going to give you an update. Well, let me ask the very questions on the change order for the Harvard Road project.
Councilmember Miskus, you have a question?
Okay, ahead of my mind, just a minute. Um, in, uh, the last meeting, I had asked, we could find out if the governor actually signed the updated transportation legislation that has passed, uh, in legislature earlier this year.
Yes, it was signed, thank you. Yeah, I should have mentioned that. The budget was signed by the governor.
Good work.
Councilmember Severs, you have a question?
Uh, in your head, it's, uh, you, you, I don't think it's a labor, but you wired it, it was, um, first, it was.
So, Lisa's going to help us with that answer.
Yeah, so, um, we could ask the question numerous times to Wash Dot, uh, given that this isn't overcast, it was going to not be for the construction in the, uh, federal light way, um, but, um, as we look at the construction, and this is actually, um, a kickoff meeting, because we would need to put the tiny in the median between eastbound and westbound plane, Wash Dot, um, said well, so it's going to have to leave us. The problem is that it is categorical exclusion, but it requires that it be a document in categorical exclusion, which basically requires almost a mini E I S to get to the place where we've got, uh, the, the categorical exclusion. We've got to do a whole bunch of additional tests and studies, including the noise study, hazardous materials report, uh, the water resource discipline report, biological resource report, et cetera. Um, and so that is the reason for the change order, and, um, again, uh, Wash Dot was black in place that, um, under other circumstances, but it would have to do with.
Okay, is that? Yes, that's.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foyer?
So, with, uh, there is the project, they're doing the project with their crane, they forgot to tell us about this?
So the crane, so actually, it, it's actually third construction, we're going to have to have the crane in the median, and that's when they, um, it, it, truly, it was, we asked the question many times as we were talking the project and, uh, etc., and it was not until the kickoff meeting that, uh, Wash Dot was part of it, asking we must use the labor first.
You have other questions? Not hearing any, we will move on.
Thank you.
So Johnson's going to give, give us an update on library services.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council, I hope you all can hear me okay. Um, I just wanted to give you an update on what we are doing to help support our community and everything during the time. So, um, the first thing is we have started doing regular online programming for the community, Monday through Wednesday, we're doing sort of a short story time for our youngest audience. Um, Tuesdays, we're doing a teen craft event sometime, Thursdays, we're doing an adult program of sometime, and then on Friday, we're doing other craft events for youth of various ages. Some of those we're doing via Facebook Live, some of them we're filming on YouTube, so we are all learning new skills right now, um, that we can support and provide some things to our community. We're also providing some interactive posts on Facebook, um, things like the first post that made me love reading was that often has, you know, about twenty comments or so, such a pretty good engagement for Facebook for us. Um, and we of course have digital resources, we're still providing a lot of databases and add new resources that are still available, we're posting them, we're updating, um, adding them to the website to try and help out, you know, um, set people to know where to go for things. Um, but one stat that I just wanted to share with our Washington Anytime Line Road staff, um, from March fifteenth to April twentieth in twenty nineteen, we checked out, uh, one thousand three hundred and forty-two e-books, um, and then from March fifteenth to April twentieth, twenty twenty, we checked out fifteen eighty-nine, we did a twenty-five percent increase in online circulation, which is pretty hefty for us. Um, we're also offering online card registration for, um, electronic resources, so people can fill out the form online and give us all finished it up, so they can get access. Um, behind the scenes, at the libraries, we've been completing some projects that we haven't had time to do before, and one of them was on our sort of one to two year work plan from the youth assessment, which was to reorganize and catalog and process adult fiction, so that they're now organized into genres for people to offer a better browsing experience. So that was a big project that we just completed this past week. Um, we're also working on other items on the one year work plan, and, uh, are developing sort of reopening plans for whatever that may actually happen, the varying scenarios of what we need to have in place and what best practices you may have and things like that. So, that included my update, if you have any questions, I may happen to answer them.
Jocelyn, thank you so much for giving me any advice.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, there you go.
Well, guys, we will, thank you. So moving along, uh, next slide, just a quick update, the Matson Appleway signal, uh, was put in the full cycle mode today at nine o'clock, so if you have a chance to drive by there and experience the new cycle, or the new traffic signal, um, that would be good. This project was a long time in coming, and just a reminder, the majority of, the, the majority of the project was funded by T I D. And then also wanted to mention the Country District Corridor Open House, we're going to have a virtual meeting on Tuesday, a week from tonight, April twenty-third, excuse me, April twenty-eighth at four P M. It will be a Zoom meeting, um, Lisa and our consultant are going to basically share with our community and hopefully get their feedback on the information that was shared with our new, uh, our last, uh, the last council meeting or the meeting before, I don't remember which council meeting it was, but it's basically pretty much the same, uh, feedback, um, so looking forward to, especially people that live along Country District, we love to get people's feedback on that project. And finally, uh, Mayor Verkan already gave us an update on farmer's market, and I think kind of in summary, there are a lot of activities between opening the farmer's market, the Fourth of July, a lot of things that are being evaluated and discussed, and we will have more information in the future, but right now, we're kind of putting these on hold until we have better direction from the governor's office and a sense of how much longer this is going to last. So, Mayor, was there, were you going to mention the, so, okay, that concludes my report.
Any other question, any questions from the council? Katie, on her report? Not hearing any, we will go on to action items, and, uh, since, uh, councilmember Kennedy's communication system isn't working quite the way we'd like it, I will ask somebody else if they can, uh, make motions on any items, it looks like councilmember Miskus will be doing that.
Yep, I'm going to do it, um, here, I'm going to have time, um, to do, including the approval of April seventh, sixth, ninth, we complimented, and approval of April twelfth and approval of April 20th, 6:20, a voucher of $659,044.
We got a second from Councilmember Severs. Call in favor, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion passes. General business, please.
Uh, real quick, before I make the motion, I called the end today. There's some little pages in the action item detail that some weird formatting, they're trying to fix this on the end or my able to. But I've been assured that anything that gets actually signed, those oddballs, it needs to be slightly corrected. So it didn't seem that anything material for the fact that it happened in more formatting and weird simple issues. So with that being said, the new action item will be general business one. And a perfectly intervocal agreement with Spokane County regarding mature production implementation.
Got a second, call in favor, signify by saying aye.
I see your question from Councilwoman Forrester.
I got a Councilmember Forrester, question?
Yeah, I have a question. Section 5, Foxwell Acquisition and Disposition of Property, it says that any real personal property acquired by the county is one of the available, this county got it to sell the whole property of the county. Can somebody give me an example of what that might be?
We're pulling it up real quick. Sorry. Yeah.
It's on page 27 of 79 in the PDF.
Councilmember Forrester, your view that the county had to fund the county company, or you want to be on one of these? Correct. So let's say that there was...
It says real or personal property. So against the personal property, what about the real property?
The real property means land. And I don't see land being associated with this. But let's say they bought a van. It'd be something that could be real property. Let's say they bought computer devices to support the CTR program. So those are maybe examples. So basically, the way that this works is the allocation for Liberty Lake is approximately $35,000. You don't have a program. We're required to have a program. And so those funds are given to the county to be part of a family-wide program. If those funds are used to buy real property or personal property, then those will be owned by the county. So, you know, Phil, I don't have a better example, Bill. I could think of if they bought a van, if they bought a computer, if they bought a desk, those would be things that could be property that the county is supposed to be doing.
This has been a place for quite some time. So they're not only buying real property, they look at it.
That is correct. It has been, ever since I've been in the relight, the county has run on a CTR program. And they run the other jurisdictions as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any Councilmember Langford, you have a question?
Yes, I noticed also in the business part of that resolution, was that, or general business, was that the reduction, the trigger reduction has only affected 10 businesses inside of Liberty Lake? And I'm wondering, is there any plans to expand that? It's pretty much been the same list year after year after year. And I'm wondering, are we saying that we could manage 10 businesses with less than $35,000 a year?
That's a great question, Councilwoman Langford. You know, the program touches on a lot of current practices, outreach to employees, carpooling. There's a whole host of things that go into this and then also connecting it according with STA, et cetera, and some of the larger employers. We just don't have the staff or the expertise to do that. We could certainly look into that. But at this point in time, you know, I haven't done that. I haven't worked into converting this into something that we offer. RJ, have you converted it?
I did. I consider it similar to like an operation like Scraps or another regional business. This is more a model of looking at the entire mobility of Spokane County, not just Liberty Lake. By the statute that the law has, they identify those 10 businesses. Could we take that on? Now we've got a huge learning curve. We've tried to dedicate one or two staff to run the program and it's a unique requirement that the state has. So we, in a lot of jurisdictions, we do this as well compared to the regional plan that they have.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to have a staff opportunity to answer their question. It seems like a lot of money was just gotten taken about the details of work and the laws that have to be incorporated into the everyday practice and paperwork. Sounds like a discussion here.
Any further questions from the council? Okay, not hearing any. Do we have a good motion? Yes, we've seen the vote. Okay, just want to make sure. All of those in favor of action item number one? General business, actually. Raise your right hand or say aye.
Question, receivers?
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Severs. No, he went raising the right hand.
Who did?
I think so, yeah. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye?
Aye. Aye.
I see everyone voted in favor. All opposed, just to make sure. None here. Okay.
All right, moving back to action item 2, Dr. Iger, execute the foster supplemental agreement number 1, and we now have 42,000 statements to accept.
Aye.
We got a second from Severs. Questions? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So I got everybody in favor of that one as well. Moving on to the next one.
Moving back to item 3, confirm your personal appointment of Ralph Ralph Loomin, the Spokane County County and Community Revival Advisor.
Aye.
A second from Councilmember Severs. Question or comments?
Agreed with the contribution of our business to the early asset community.
And just for anyone that doesn't know, Ralph was in his position prior. We're reappointing him as needed. All of those in favor, signify by saying aye or raising your right hand?
Aye.
All of those opposed? So we got everybody in favor except for Councilmember Kennedy. Okay. Moving on to resolution, Anna?
Resolution number 20-271, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, approving an amended and restated community revitalization financing and tax increment area agreement, authorizing the execution of such agreement and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Do we have a motion for a resolution?
Yeah, I'm the resolution, our 20-271.
Is that a second read?
We got a second?
No, is this a second read?
This is a resolution, sir. There's no require on a second read.
Thank you. And we got a second from Councilwoman Severs.
Recognized. All of those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Discussion.
Oh, sorry, discussion. Yeah, thank you. Been a long day.
Here it is, sir.
I'm happy to say.
I do, I would like to have somebody from staff, probably RJ, address this with your permission. The questions are, as you're reading through this, we're moving from 2020 deadline, or 2021 deadline, to 2025 deadline. And we talked about the original $15 million limit on what could be used. And now we're at about 20. And my big question would be, are we talking only a $5 million increase from 15 to 20? Or are we talking about increase from another zero to 20 million? And the second question along with that is that the supporting documents talk about this going for the overpass and Henry Road. However, the body of it doesn't actually mention that route. So thank you for hearing the question.
So the resolution, the intent is to extend it for another five years, so basically make it 20 years or $20 million. We put parameters in there in case either one of them would be hit. But the intent is really extend it for another five years. We know it's expiring at 2021. It's probably extended for five years. Currently, the TIF over the last 13 years has generated a total of about $5.5 million. So it's not even close to $15 million. And it's probably not necessary that we increase it to $20 million, but we just wanted to have that in place just for some unforeseen growth. Really probably projecting at five years, an additional five years, that the TIF would have generated a total of almost $14 million. That's what that total would have been. The second part you mentioned was, it's not mentioned in a body. And the reason the ask of to extend it for five years, we're talking with the county and the other two jurisdictions that are involved, the fires, Spokane County, that fire district, and Spokane County. Library district, they have a small piece just on the north side, where there was a vested interest on Henry Road Overpass being built and looking at the forecast, the cost of the city's reimbursement of their construction portion of that project. The cash balance was going to be around $500,000. So we thought, if we added another five years, we'd have ample money to complete the project plus also some other projects in there. I can fill up a muster this one to get, and why don't you?
I can add maybe just a part of clarification if it will help. If you recall, you know, as part of the 69 months ago, the county commissioners were very interested in us building a span over the right of way on the south side of I-90. That's, that right of way that's on the south side of I-90 is owned and controlled by Spokane County for the future light rail system. And the additional costs associated with that span is going to be paid for by the county. And the county wants to use these funds to reimburse us. Is that correct, if I'm getting it?
That is correct.
So the funds, and they ordered to send it for five years to make sure there was enough time to park the funds so that they could use these funds to reimburse themselves for the cost of the extra span of the Henry Road.
Have we, Councilmember Forrester, any question?
With you, under the divot, it refers to public improvement cost. It refers to sewer question lines, sewer water systems, and sewer pump stations, both in Spokane County and Liberty Lake Sewer District. Question is, is not the sewer water district completely a separate entity?
Yeah, but the way the TIF program and actually the lift program both ways for public infrastructure, so sewer, public sewer lines, not the residential pieces or the commercial that we, the main, are eligible for this project. And there were many identified in the original scope. So we have done, Greystone had built lift stations. They had put sewer in there. Those have been eligible for green vision improvement.
So to add clarification, as you know, when a project goes in, the developer builds and pays for all that infrastructure. So even though the water and sewer district are a different agency, the developers are getting reimbursed for that public infrastructure through this.
So is it not applying for the sewer district to do improvements, repairs, and so on?
That's correct. They don't pay for the extension of the lines or the servicing on the lines. It's the developers that are paying for that.
Councilmember Langford?
Yes, Mayor. Katie, did we, just refresh my memory, when we went for right of ways, and some of that was owned by the county? And didn't they charge us to buy the right of way?
I'm trying to remember. I do not own anything they gave us. Let me think about this for a minute.
This might be happening.
We received a donation, as we know, from Centennial Properties for the Henry Road Overpass, except for the pieces that was over the county. They hung on to that right of way. I do not only believe we paid for it, but Councilwoman Langford, we do have a responsibility going forward, and that is to operate and maintain the structure over their right of way. So when it snows, when the asphalt needs to be patched, when the lines need to be repainted on the road, we're going to be responsible for the costs associated with that. But I do not believe that there's a cost associated with easement. But I'm going to, when I get back tomorrow morning, I'll look that up and confirm.
Any other questions from the council? Uh, Councilmember Kaminski?
Um, Katie, so I remember currently, we're allowed to use that right of way, but if let it go clean, it comes, it's coming, is that fast? Or like, we're all looking to give it back. I think that's what we have to do.
Actually, we ended up building, in fact, I just looked at the profile. There's actually an opening in the structure to allow for that future light rail so that we don't have to do what Councilmember Kaminski's just described. I know originally that's what we wanted, but the commissioner wanted us to go to span over the right of way. So the profile includes an open span over the county's right of way. Thank you.
So are we going to be able to share with the TIF money for our E2, legislative campaigns on this field, and the extension of the TIF?
Aye, absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, not hearing any. We have a motion for resolution 20-271. All in favor, signify by saying aye or raising your hand?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes.
Good work.
Ayes across the board. Okay, we are going to get into introduction of upcoming items. But before we do that, there's something that I want to share with the council, with everybody watching on Zoom or Facebook. I had posted a video that was very much from the heart. And I do want to acknowledge the majority of our community, the 99% of our community that's done an amazing job on not only being patient with all this, but their willingness to help out, to step up. You've seen businesses and churches and volunteer groups, you name it, try to step up to make a difference during this time. I think it's important that everybody understand... up to make a difference during this time. I think it's important that everybody understand that every decision, discussion that is being had, is being had with everybody in mind. And so when I say everybody, I mean everybody. We look at and listen to the doctors in our meeting, we look at the science behind it, but we also take into consideration all those impacted in our community. We have quite a few businesses that have expressed the challenges that they're facing. We have heard from people that have challenges or concerns, frustrations with what some of our government officials are saying or doing. But I want to make sure that everybody understands on a regional level, with those involved, we take everybody's concern and question very serious. So what do I mean by that? I have heard and have seen and paid close attention to you, the challenges that people are facing. So I think about the dad that sent a message out there that he is two and a half weeks into this, tried to head and had filed two and a half weeks ago for an appointment, hadn't seen anything yet. He had finally got his government support card in the mail, and that card was still blank with a zero balance. And he couldn't go get some of the essential things that he needed for his family. I think about when my wife and I first started out, we had a kind of an instant family, where I had adopted her two kids. Like many of the population, we were making ends meet the best we could. Like 60% of our population in our county was, we were living paycheck to paycheck. So I think about those people. I think about the elderly population, those that have, over the age of 65, that have compromised immune systems, or those with MS or lupus, or whatever diseases that causes compromised immune systems. I think about the little kids that I see out and about playing. I think about the single moms and dads out there, working tirelessly just to make ends meet. I think about the people in our medical field, and how they are impacted by this, and the risk they put themselves at. I think about our business owners that have chosen to call Spokane County and Liberty Lake their home, and the challenges that they're facing right now. So I take, along with the rest of the mayors, everybody's input very, very serious with every decision we make. We don't take this lightly. We're trying to balance all the information we have to make the best decisions possible at the time of the information that's provided to us. We are having conversations, as I mentioned earlier, about steps that we think we can take to try to get to, back to a sense of normalcy, if you will, to help those businesses get back in moving, to help those moms and dads get back to work, to help those in need during this time. And so with that, we're going to start a community message, if you will. That message is going to be called, and I'll put it up on the screen so you can see it. You might have a hard copy, I don't know. I don't know if you can see this. It says Liberty Lake Together. So what does Liberty Lake Together mean? It means all those people I referenced. It means our city staff, it means our city council, it means every one of us helping each other out, being patient during this time, giving each other that break, understanding we're all under stress, we're all under pressure. So my ask, and you're going to see it on our city website, you're going to see it on our Facebook page, we've already seen our reader board change through City Hall. The school district is also changing their reader board. We've had local businesses that said they would like to be involved, of having this message of Liberty Lake Together. We will have that exact picture that I shared with you on our city website, as well as our Facebook page, so you can print it off. And I encourage you to place it in your house window, to place it in your car window. We'll have them in city vehicles. We need to maintain a balance of support for one another, and we need to maintain a balance of positivity. We're on a teeter totter right now of staying really positive, and starting to get very frustrated. And we need to keep that on the positive side, for everybody's sake. So I ask that you join me in this effort of getting a message out to remind each other that we're in this together, and to show everybody else how we're doing this. I have had some people challenge or question things. I encourage that you continue to provide your feedback. But ask for clarification if you don't understand something. What we don't need is negativity. We need to focus on that support. We're all tired, we're all frustrated, we're all facing these challenges together. And for those 1% naysayers, those 1% that want to be negative about this whole process, thinking that we aren't keeping you all in mind, for those keyboard tough guys, if you will, change your channel, because we're not going anywhere. And we're going to keep fighting for the city. So I'll leave it at that, and we'll finish up with introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next council meeting, our next council meeting is May 5, and we have a workshop on the Transportation Improvement Plan, from 21 through 26. We have an agreement with Spokane County regarding scraps, which is continuation of existing agreement we have. And then finally, we will add to the agenda the MRSO project for the generator R2 and solar lights, please mention.
Okay. Any further council questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anybody else? All right, we will open it up to citizen comments. Once I get the green light from Todd, the word unmuted. Any citizen comments on the line? Not hearing anything. Thank you all for joining. Stay safe, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.